... flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank the Lord for attentive wives who kicked me out the door. Plus, you would have been in charge.
I would've started without you.
All right. Council activity reports. I don't have any meetings to report on. I unfortunately missed the EDAP because I didn't get the agendas. Didn't make my calendar. That's my bad. We did have the chamber banquet, though, on Saturday. Everyone was there. Congratulations, Ron. Boss of the year is very well deserved. Couldn't think of a more appropriate recipient of that, so congratulations and thank you for all you do to run your department and everything for the city.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Neil?
I don't have much. We did cancel a policy and procedure meeting, and I did go to the Green Roof to represent the city. The biggest thing was the three-stall garage is completed. It got heat and everything. Vans are in there. It's operational.
Thanks.
And they talked their usual stuff about fundraisers and their budget and had a good meeting. And I also was at the chamber annual meeting on Saturday night, which was very nice. That's it.
She's not that loud, Will.
Ah, she's good.
Okay. I actually was busier than all of you guys. I had a liquor board meeting. I don't remember what we just discussed. Assistant manager, Tark wasn't there.
And you're going to MMBA trainings now.
And we're going to MMBA trains. And then an EDAP meeting that you missed I was at. And then I, too alone, some person, I went to the Stearns County Municipal League meeting in Richmond as the only person for me here. I had to bring the checkbook bill paper to me. And then the chamber annual meeting that we were all at.
Did you get reelected as treasurer?
I didn't elect. I'm still on for the year. I told them I have to find someone else next year.
Paul?
Had a planning board meeting and the chamber dinner, which had my fill of spaghetti, which was very good. That's it.
All right. Department heads. Ron?
Great. Thank you. First of all, painting in City Hall. Here we're roughly seventy, seventy-five percent complete. There's a few of the side rooms to do here yet. Christmas decorations will be coming down this year week. We did have a trail board where, you know, we are working on the design for Phase Two. Again, Phase Two is the portion on 130th on Highway 55 up to 185th. The portion beyond that to the Glacier Lakes Trail, we will follow 185th to the east, actually, and then going north along the trail. That part will likely be bid as an alternate. We want to make sure we don't overbid our project. And the DNR, not the DNR, but the county and the state have to review and approve the plan, so that will take a couple of months yet, but hopefully this spring we will be bidding that yet. Also on the trail, just to follow up on our resolutions that we sent to the DNR, we did have our local county commissioner meet with the representatives, DeMuth and Baker, to solicit lobby funds for that section to coincide with the completion when we get ours done. Also, brought up at the trail board meeting, there is a group that wants to come to one of the next council meetings just to gain our support for a local county park. It's going to be about a 200-acre park somewhat adjacent to the golf course. I told them they need to come here. That would be the best option. Our new center pivots are in. They're being delivered this week. And also then now at the airport, the aviation program with the school, they did have their little trip, and there was 24 students, so they made eight round trips complete. It went very well. A lot of enthusiasm for the program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron? All right. Tark?
I don't have much to report. I was at the planning board meeting, which we'll be talking about here, the EDAP meeting. Kirsten and I had election judge training at Stearns County this last week, so that went well. And then Chuck and I were working on, and we had a call with Deed, on a redevelopment grant, which is a grant for demolition if we were to proceed with Washburn Court. So, it's just to see if we get the grant. It's very competitive. I don't know our likelihood of getting it, but we were encouraged to apply anyway.
Questions for Tark? All right. None. Is there anybody here for our open forum? I'll cut you off after 10 minutes, though. She doesn't have a cutoff.
My name is Will Beardmore, and this is my somewhat loud daughter, Cecilia. Cecilia's mom is Carrie Heft, Bill and Nancy Heft's daughter. So, I married her because, married her, moved here because we had her. And by the grace of God, her sister runs a daycare, Christine Gierman. And if it weren't for her, we wouldn't have daycare here, and likely we would have moved to Cold Spring or Watkins or somewhere around here. Thankfully, I'm able to be in the area as long as we have childcare. I heard, I'm new here, that that effort had been ongoing and an effort had gone to the wayside. Wondering how I, as a young adult, young parent, can get involved in maybe pushing that along, if there are ongoing efforts or what myself and some of my peers are able to do to push that along.
I would love for Christine to open a center. I don't know how she does it, and then Sunday School. Yeah, I will say it's something that's on the forefront of all of our minds as far as what we need in this community. There are a few individuals who do it and who are active, but yeah, we need to be taking probably a more proactive approach in that regard. So, it's very wonderful to know that you're interested, and we will certainly be reaching out as things get put together. And don't worry if she's loud. You don't need to leave. Fine. All right.
We're louder. I know. Learned that personally.
All right. On to our consent agenda, which includes the minutes listed on page one, along with the vouchers on page two of the agenda totaling $206,555.49. Is there a motion to approve, or would anyone like something removed?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hertzberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Having no old business, we'll move straight on to new. Just make sure. Right. The appointment of firefighter officers on page three. I was in attendance at the meeting. They did elect the officers shown on here. Mike Stern was elected chief. Look forward to working with Mike and John in their new roles. And those who stepped off, Andy Hu served for six years. Did a wonderful job getting that department to work together as a team, so I look forward to that. And would entertain a motion to formally appoint these officers.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Soini. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? Not sure what they'd do if we voted no. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Ron, on the QT pod agreement.
Okay, QT, we've been with this for about 12 years. This is the first time that they are actually offering a extended contract. And as you can see, the savings there, over five years, we would save one year on the QT contract, and that would be $1,985. There is no savings on the cell phone or the communications of it. But I think the big thing is, there also would be no increase, so we would have these prices locked in. So, if the prices would jump, obviously, we would not see that either. The airport commission has reviewed it and has recommended approving the contract.
We upgraded something a few years ago out there, didn't we?
Sure. We had the M3000, and we are now upgrading to the M, I think it's a 4000, M4000 database support. You know, when items go wrong out there, generally, it's obvious it's inside there. It's always with electronics, and it's never cheap. So, there's no doubt we will save our, get our money back.
Is this a one-time payment, then, for the five years?
Right. Yes.
Oh, we want...
Right.
I'll make the motion to approve the QT pod five-year premium access plan in the amount of $10,380.
Okay, there's a motion by Soini, as stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries.
She agrees.
I'm glad. Here, I'm thinking, maybe I'm gaveling too hard. Paul's going to yell at me again. All right. On to the, Ron or Chuck, on the crack filling.
Yes, just to give an update, as the council's aware, we've been dealing with the FAA and MinDOT several times to talk about the condition of the pavement out at the airport. Obviously, there's significant cracking out there. Originally, we had hoped to do sort of a total rehabilitation project in the 2020 time, 2025 timeframe. However, in order to proceed with that, MinDOT wants pretty extensive planning done to make sure, you know, some direct access from the acre to turn around. So, that's going to push that, ultimately push that pavement project out a little ways. So, at this point, we're looking to pursue a crack seal project, and the hope is we're on some of the wider cracks to use some different material that hopefully will help bridge those cracks. So, maybe we can look at just an overlay in the future rather than a complete grind everything up. So, what this will do is if we do the crack seal this year, we'll have a couple of years to see how they, how the cracks react, to see if an overlay, overlay is going to be significantly less cost in the future than a complete, what I would call rehabilitation project. But we would want that time because we would want to overlay it right away. We want to see how these, these cracks handle or hold up with, with the mast on it. So, so with that, the other thing we have to do, with federal funding, every so often, you got to go out for requests for qualifications for consultants. So, before we proceed with the crack seal project, we'd be looking to the city, the city should go out and do a request for qualifications and seek qualifications, then go through a selection process.
Our proposed motion on here is to proceed with the crack repair project and approve the request for qualifications. Should we hold off on the first part and just do the request?
Yes.
All right. So, with that, the suggestion is to move forward with a request for qualifications in anticipation of then bringing back the airport crack fill project. I'd entertain a motion if there's any, if there's no further discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the request for qualifications for the crack filling project.
Is it just for the crack filling, or are you looking generally?
In general.
Okay.
Airport.
So, we have a motion by Hertzberg to approve a request for qualifications generally for the airport. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Carries. All right. On to the land rent. Ron again.
Okay. Thank you. The current contract for the farm land rent is expired in 2023. However, we do have one year remaining with Stearns County with the homestead credits that we signed several years ago, just to try to get them to coincide. I think our options we'd be looking at is to extend one year under the existing contract or approve a new four-year contract, which the renters have agreed to increase the rent by $10 per acre. And then we could then renew the homestead credit also, so they would coincide with each other. I guess if we go one year, then after that, we could bid it out, if that's what the council wishes, or approve the new four-year contract with the increase. And that land out there, the $137.50 per acre is a very good price. It is a, that soil out there is very much a sandy loam, and it is also, a large area of it was the area that the, was stripped and then reapplied because that's where drums taken from to build the airport. So, it is not the best of progress. So...
I have one question for you.
Yes.
The land right next to Teal's. I'm just thinking, if it's four years' time, if there would be a developer or somebody would want to put in a, a business there, would we be able to back out of that part of the lease?
I, that parcel, I don't believe is built because of the airport.
Oh, okay.
No, what, yes, good question.
Ron, we're happy with the current renter.
Yes, with the current renter, with Andrew.
Does that mean it's a law?
Yes. And the other thing, the, the next renter we get may not qualify for the homestead credits. So, we may be out that one. We're gone. So...
I'll make a motion to approve a four-year contract with Magas Welling LLC at $137.50 per acre.
So, motion by Soini to approve the four-year contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? I'll just say, Ron, through the semi-week or so ago, when I stopped in at City Hall, we chatted briefly, and I've pondered it back and forth. And I agree, if we have a good tenant, a burden in the hand, as they say, is worth two in the bush. So, I think we stick with it. We know that they qualify. They've been good for us, so I'm good with this. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None. Motion carries. Right. Okay. We then have a conditional use permit application from the Furch property. Motion, the request for the council is to approve or deny the application. Number of comments on here. We also have findings from our planning board. If I could just get to them when I get there. Paul, while I dig through my agenda, can you tell me how the planning board meeting went?
It went okay. There was some back and forth with, more so the decommissioning. Well, there wasn't a solid figure put on there. So, I think it was agreed to, I don't know...
The same as the other one?
Pardon me?
The same as the other one?
Yeah, pretty close to it. Yeah. But I think we went along with a letter of credit instead of cash or bond.
Well, it's in the alternative, but it's the same as the other one?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah.
Okay.
The dollar amount is the same.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Other than that, everything went through, pretty much on a 3-2 vote, and we made the recommendation to proceed.
All right. Looking through the findings here, we have, it's been applied for, the conditional use will not be injurious to the enjoyment of others in the immediate vicinity, will not impede the normal and orderly development of the area. There are adequate utilities and roads. Adequate measures have been taken to prevent odor, fumes, dust. Proper facilities are provided to eliminate traffic congestion. There is demonstrated need in the community, and the proposed use is in compliance with any relevant land use plans adopted by the city. Therefore, the recommendation was that the permit be granted. We do have a council action sheet in here as well for us to go through. Just saying we have Mr. Furch's here. Is there anything you wanted to tell us?
No, I don't have any questions.
Anybody on the council have any questions about the application?
Pretty much same as the last one.
Yes. I will say I did. We'd have the opportunity to watch just a, a couple of minutes, not even remotely all of the discussion that was had regarding it, but I know there was some talk about what other areas are doing as far as moratoriums and things like that. And I would just remind the council that we have an ordinance in place that allows a procedure for this. So, it's not a question if we get the right to deny it just because we don't like it. We can amend our ordinance to disallow for these things if we wanted to, but as long as they're permitted under our ordinance, if somebody comes before us with an application and meet the requirements, we are obligated to grant it. So, I think that's something that if there's a strong push, we should look at other alternatives other than turning away the development.
And I reminded the, the planning board, too, that what's happening with the county and the township is not in our jurisdiction. So, if they have an issue with that, they need to go to the right people and take up their issue with, with those people. Instead of bringing it towards the city council and wondering why we can't do something with the township or the county, because our spot is within the city.
Neil, you look like you were going to say something.
Well, I feel this is pretty much marginal land that probably isn't suited for much of anything else. And if we have land like that elsewhere in the town, I have no problem looking at that for solar. On productive land and land that can be used for commercial or residential, absolutely no. But this is marginal at best, so I'm in favor of the garden.
One other thing that, if I could add, that I've mentioned to the other planning board members, is that through our budget this year, we did not have as much of an increase as was at first anticipated. And I gave credit to building up the tax base in the area, which is helping with this, the budget and keeping the property taxes manageable. And if we can keep inviting new businesses to locate the Paineville or start in Paineville, that's just going to give some relief to the city budget. Where, where we at? How is this year? Eight percent? Which I can only ballpark a couple of surrounding cities, which I think were a lot higher. But the more that we work with the businesses to bring this in, the easier it's going to be on, on our budget. And that made sense to them.
Bill, you had something down there?
I was just going to say, at, at the last meeting, I asked if it was, because the application said two, up to two megawatts, and it was told it was going to be one, and that's the way this is drafted, is it's one megawatt, and that's right, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The other one was one also.
Yep. Yep.
It's identical, right?
This one's actually a little bit smaller than the original one that you guys granted, just because it uses up the balance of that property that's on that side of there.
And Gene at the planning committee also had them confirm that they're going to be using the same poles, the same access road, so it's not going to be any extra poles or road.
Okay.
So, with that, the council needs to either adopt the recommendations of the planning committee and incorporate them into our action, or reject those findings and make our own. I'm sensing consensus of the council that we want to adopt the findings of the planning committee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the findings of the planning committee, and then it sounds like approve the application for conditional use permit for the Furch family LLP.
I'll make that motion.
So, motion by Soini to adopt the findings of the planning board and approve the motion, or the permit. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Carries. Right. Then we have a motion or any concept plan for the Furch family limited partnership. I will admit, not knowing much about this, so if somebody wants to bring me up to speed.
So, I mean, I can tell you what I know. It's, it's just the, the first step. The next step will be a preliminary plat, but this just shows the general layout of, of the, and it basically incorporates the two, the two different solar projects are the area that's going to be platted. And there's some comments on here about things I think that staff is, you know, expressing that they need to be part of it, but, but at this point, I think the layout, the general layout of it is, it is what it is. It's just the property that's included in the two solar farms, and they're just plating that, so that will become a separate parcel. And the details will be filled in, but I think, you know, the idea that there's, you know, we were told at the planning meeting that they're working on getting a permanent easement from MinDOT for the access, so that they're aware that that needs to be done, and they're working on it. And I'm sure that'll be completed before we get the preliminary plat. The other things there, I think, are kind of self-explanatory. So, they're just things that have to, have to happen in the plating process, but this is just sort of a preliminary thing to show the area that they want to plat and get any comments from, from staff so they can get to work on doing their, doing their preliminary plat. I think that's happening.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill.
One correction, though. I said Gene when I meant Jennifer. Jennifer had them confirm the road and the wire, or poles, I mean.
Perfect. All right. And with that, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve or deny the Lake Avenue East Subdivision Plat One Concept Plan.
I'll make the motion to approve Lake Avenue East Subdivision Plat One Concept Plan.
Motion by Hertzberg. Is there seconded by Soini. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. You. And a fun story, since we're talking Furchy, I pulled some trim off of my house to do a project, and on the back, it was stamped Furchy. So, there it is. All right. We have a redevelopment grant through Deed, this Tark was talking about earlier, on the demolition of the Washburn Court Building. Tark?
Yeah, this is a grant through Deed. Chuck and I and Nancy over at Bolton and Mink have been working on the application this past week, or last week. When we had a call with them, it's a fairly competitive grant, roughly a million dollars they give out every six months, so we can apply in February and we can apply in August. They said it's primarily used for demolition projects and is primarily used by for-profit businesses. However, they did say they like the community aspect of it, as, you know, we said we're looking to redevelop it into a library. So, with that in mind, we did, you know, work on completing the application. There are a couple of resolutions and a, what do they call it here? Conflict of interest disclosure that we need to complete before we submit, before the deadline of February 1st. So, what we'd like to do is apply for this grant now. I'm not sure what our chances are of getting it, but if we don't get it, we can apply again in August.
My only rub is we don't technically own that site yet.
Yep.
Are we going to be closing before then?
Nope.
We can still receive the grant, and then you have so much time to refuse it or...
Yeah, but was it Chuck, a year? No, it was more than a year before you have to show that you're using the grant money.
Yeah, there's certain timeframes in the grant that I'd have to pull them up, but it was, I think you're...
Yeah. So, that's why I said, chances are, we have a low chance of getting it now, but why don't we apply? And if we do get it now, we have a year before we can get started on it, or we need to get started on it.
If we apply, it's going to ding our chances, I assume, of getting it because we don't own the property yet. But by applying now, are we showing increased interest if we reapply it later?
It never told with every grant. It seems to be, it seems to help in some grant opportunities to...
It helped with the empty park thing.
And the trail board.
And the trail.
I'm also not entirely convinced that demoing that building is the best course of action, but...
It's an option. We'll see.
Yep. If we don't apply for the grant, we don't even, at least even have the option.
We don't have the option.
There's no further discussion. I'd entertain a motion, as stated on the action sheet here, looking at Resolutions 2024-07, 2024-08, and the conflict of interest disclosure.
We're going to do three separate motions?
I would be willing to put them in one.
So...
I have a motion by Thielen to approve Resolution 2024-07, 2024-08, and the applicant conflict of interest form.
I will second, though.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Okay. Then we have a number of informational items, our liquor store reports, the safety, LMC, Safety and Loss Control workshops, our various financial reports, garbage rates, and then an updated February/March meeting schedule on tonight's update. With that, we have no further business. We do have a recommendation here or a request that we go into a closed session to discuss property and a potential sale of that. If somebody wants to make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that.
So, motion by Soini to go into closed session to discuss making an offer on the property at 317 State Highway 55, parcel 70.39363.0025 pursuant to the open meeting law, 13D.05 sub 3, to discuss an asking price for real property. With that, we will adjourn our business meeting or recess our business meeting and go into closed session and come back after that's done.
I'll have a second.
I'm sorry. There's no second to Gene's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
317 State Highway 55. Three seventeen, Highway fifty-two. Wow, Ron, the stage?
All right. So we are back live. We met in closed session to discuss the property at three one seven State Highway fifty-five. Discussed what we would ask for if there is an interest in purchasing the property. Council's reached a consensus, which has been conveyed to the city administrator and city attorney. They will work with the potential buyer to see if there's an interest in bringing this back. With that, we have no further business, and we stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, Ron, I keep forgetting to tell you, on my screen...
Oh, can we get this back to Tarek so that he can shred him?